Well, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us for this meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Before we get started, just want to make a few reminders, some housekeeping items. Number one, if you are intending to address the commission, please come forward and fill out one of those forms that our staff has. I believe that they're outside, or do you all have some up here as well? Some extra forms? Yeah. So, take the time, please, fill out one of those forms. When your name is called, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes to address the commission. We do reserve the right to limit the length of your comments for any repetitious comments. We'd also ask that if you're here with a large group, that you find a spokesperson to speak on behalf of all of the issues that your group may have. The golden rule is in full effect in this meeting. We just ask that you respect each other and respect the process and respect the commissioners who are here. So, without further ado, we are now in line to receive the minutes from the January 12th, 2023 meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move to receive the January 12th minutes.
The motion from Commissioner Claire is to receive the minutes from the January 12th, 2023 meeting. Is there a... Oh, we'll see if it's on Prime Gov here. Oh, am I the only one that's not? Okay, sorry. Refresh after they gave us the tips. Forgive us. Okay. So, we received the motion. It's...I'm voting, but I'm not seeing who seconded on my screen. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. I apologize. We're dealing with the technology, trying to make sure the technology is working up here, and it looks like it's mostly my user error. We're now in line for continuance requests. We'll begin with uncontested requests.
The first is item 19, PC 10853, deferred to March 9th. Item 20, SPUD 1466, defer to March 9th as well. Item 21, KC 7511, deferred to March 23rd. Item 22, case PC 10864, deferred to March 23rd. And item 23, PUD 1908, has been withdrawn.
Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, Commissioner Claire?
Move to grant the uncontested continuance requests as read.
The motion is to accept the uncontested continuance requests as read. It's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for new continuance requests.
Item 10 is KC 7527, deferred to April 13th. And item 15, SPUD 1492, deferred to March 9th.
Are there any additional continuance requests?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering for the applicant, and I have been informed that I do need to continue this and bring it back before you as a final plat.
And which item is that?
I beg your pardon, sir?
Which item is it?
Is item number 11.
Item 11. Excellent. Is there anyone else here wishing to be heard on items 10, 15, or 11? Seeing none, I think we're ready for motion.
I beg your pardon? We're continuing it. I'm going to bring it back before you as a final plat.
So can that be done by the 23rd?
Legal has decided I don't need a preliminary plat.
Is two weeks enough? Two weeks enough, or do you need longer?
I'll need just a little bit longer to get the package together and deliver to the city.
Okay. March 9th, then.
Yes, sir.
All right, then, we just need a motion to accept the new... Oh, okay, we're checking on the date, sorry. Fifteen, I think it's supposed to be fifteen, yeah.
Yes, March 23rd would be fine.
Commissioner Claire?
I'll move to approve the new continuance requests as read.
Including the continuance for item 11 until the March 23rd.
Correct.
A planning commission meeting. Is there a second? That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
We're now in line for the consent docket.
Item 1 is KC E1091, application to close 100 feet of the vacated Northwest 71st Street and 150 feet of the East-West Utility Easement of Block 1 Manor Hill Edition, located east of Claussen Boulevard and north of Northwest 70th Street. Item 2 is KC 7491, final plat of Twin Silos Section 3, located west of North Council Road and north of Northwest 150th Street. Item 3 is KC 7506, final plat of Pratt &amp; Whitney Sustainment Center, located south of I-240 and east of South Air Depot Boulevard. Item 4, KC 7526, final plat of Portland Power Center, located north of Northwest 178th Street and east of North Portland Avenue. Item 5, KC 7529, final plat of Bellflower Section 2, located south of Southwest 15th Street and west of South County Line Road. And item 6, KC 7531, final plat of Abbott Lake Edition Section 3, located west of South Air Depot Boulevard and north of Southeast 89th Street.
Is there anyone... Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items? Items 1 through 6 on the agenda. Seeing none, I think we're ready for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve the consent document... Docket as read.
The motion...Commissioner Claire moves that we approve the consent docket as read. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. The motion passes. We are now in line for item 7.
This is KC 7514, final plat of Village Place Townhomes, Section 2, located north of Southwest 89th Street and west of Southwestern Avenue.
How are you doing today? I'm Ross Morris with Morris Engineering, representing the applicant, who happens to be here also. There was one TE about the building line, and we're in agreement with the 20-foot requested, and then pass that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. This is in Ward 5. Commissioner Hinkle, would you like to begin our discussion on this?
Is there anybody wanting to be heard on this?
I have no one signed up.
No, this is a neat project, infill development with affordable housing, what we need, so I'm ready to make a motion unless anybody else has questions.
Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on this item? C 7514. I think we're ready for the motion.
So I'll move approval of C 7514 with the three technical evaluations.
Commissioner Hinkle's moved to approve C 7514, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available.
Commissioner Hinkle, are you?
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now in line for item 8.
This is KC 7528, final plat of Wilshire Park, located north of East Wilshire Boulevard and west of Northeastern Avenue, along with the variance to Section 5.8.2.2B.1 of the subdivision regulations.
Hello, my name is Kai Swartz, address 8,000 Rugby Road, Oklahoma City. This is for final plat approval and variances on sidewalks. With the nature of this development, it's large lots. We're trying to keep it as wooded and natural as possible, which is why we are asking for the sidewalk variance.
Anything else ready for questions?
No, go ahead.
You're talking about the...are there any sidewalks on Wilshire?
There are no sidewalks anywhere on Wilshire or anywhere in this...
In the vicinity?
In this area.
That makes sense to me. Any questions, thoughts from commissioners?
Well, I do, I mean...
Yeah, go ahead.
Given the nature of that particular area, though.
Yeah, I mean, it's not so much the sidewalks, you know, external. We know probably it's not going to be a neighborhood that people are walking to and from the neighborhood. But internally, if somebody, you know, wants to go for a walk, they're going to be required to walk in the street.
That's true.
Unless you have and commit to any kind of trail system behind lots or...
We don't have a commitment to that, but we...I mean, the smallest lot size in this is an acre, some of them being three acres, and there's even a couple over 10 acres. So, with doing city regulations on the streets being 26 feet or wider and everything, we are going to follow. We don't feel like we're going to have hardly any traffic to really, I mean, be a hazard for the civilians walking around the neighborhood. And it...I mean, I know it's not a big deal to anybody else, but the feasibility, when we have such a small amount of lots and that many, you know, linear feet of sidewalk, is very costly.
And also, just given the character of that area, it is very wooded. I'm more open to it. Typically, I would say I'm a stickler for the sidewalks, too. So, I could be persuaded, though, on this. Any other thoughts from commissioners?
I like sidewalks, but I'm going to defer to...I understand the particulars of the case. Have you considered sidewalks on one side of the street?
I mean, if it was a requirement, we would, but like I said, we're trying to keep this as natural, and the beauty of all the trees, and I mean, the way we're going to do the streets and the curbs are not going to be your big face curves, are going to be the sloped, and just trying to kind of make everything kind of disappear to where the visibility is, it's all natural and not going to have as little hardscape as possible.
Where's your drain...does your street section slope to gutters on either side, or does it drain...it doesn't drain to the middle, does it?
Well, I mean, with the natural roll of the land, I mean, it's up and down, up and down, and then it all flows from the west to the east across the property. So, it's going to be a little bit of all over the place, to be real honest.
Yeah, the actual road, the super will be in the middle, because of city standard.
Okay, okay.
We're going to follow the contour of the natural land and not clear all the trees to make it flat, and try to keep, you know, everything's natural as possible.
I don't think we should establish a precedent here, but there's...this seems more appropriate to make this exception in this case.
Agreed, yeah.
It's the fun of it, I guess. If the rules were the rule, they wouldn't need us here.
If the intent of the neighborhood is to be natural and aesthetic, and I get that, I think your neighbors are going to want to get out and experience that, so I think they need a place to walk that's not in the street.
Well, I think it sounds like the best thing to do would be to just...let's just vote. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on this item? C 7528. And I don't have anyone signed up to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Terry Monday, and I have the property at the furthest end that the north of where this proposed development is. And I guess my question is, I heard that there's supposed to be a pond, possibly a dam that's being made or created. So, my concern is, I'm...I have a five-acre lot at the very end, and I was wondering, is a dam or a pond going to be in this development also?
Okay. Let's see if we've got an answer here.
Yes, I mean, my intention is to...
Could you come all the way to the microphone so we can make sure?
Yes. My intention for future is to...there's creeks that run east-west above, or I guess that separate lots 911 from 10. There's a creek that runs east-west right there. You can't hardly see it. Where the white lots end, and there's the big piece of...the big lot on top, which is 10, there's a creek that runs east-west right there, and my intention right there is to put a bridge to cross the creek to gain access to the back 13 acres, and on that creek to dam up about an acre. Yeah, you can probably see it right there better. So, right...if you go right there, where that hand is, I plan on putting a dam there and backing up water to the west of that.
Okay. If you...
But it does not...I mean, the dam will be almost in the middle of the 53 acres as far as east-west, and their property that they're talking about is on the northeast, so it will not be even close to where they are. It'll be several hundred feet, and the water flows north to south.
Okay, thank you. And I'll allow you to finish your comments, and then I'm going to actually ask city staff to reference what the approval process, or if any, is required here. Barry, I don't know if you're...I assume you're the man.
Berry Lodge, Oklahoma City Public Works. So, as far as if they want to create the dam, we wouldn't necessarily review that in this instance as a detention facility, but we would require that plans be submitted so that...as part of the rest of their plan submittal, which most of those plans should already be in. I don't know if they have been turned in yet with that dam, excuse me, with the dam shown on plans or the drainage calculations for that, and I don't know if you have an answer to that part of it. But the final plan should be in for review in our review queue.
So, can you briefly maybe give the scope as concerned neighbors? Would you mind providing them maybe the scope of that review, what that timeline is, what notice, if any, they might receive, and maybe if they have any recourse if there is any damage that happens to their property as a result of this?
So, as far as additional notice, there would not be any beyond what has been received for this meeting. The plans would...they'd go under our normal review, where we're going to look at the drainage calculations. We're not really going to review and approve the dam per se. We're going to look at what's happening with the drainage patterns. If, as far as recourse, then, if there's problems in the future, that would wind up being an issue that's going to be a civil matter between the two property owners. That would not be anything that the city would get involved in as far as trying to mediate any disputes or any differences of opinion as to what has happened. They'd be welcome to look at any plans that have been submitted. Those would have...would need to be requested through the city clerk's office as an open records request, but anything that has been submitted to the city for review would be available to neighbors, residents, or the general public for them to look at as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, and that was one of my concerns, because my property, it's about maybe 30 or so feet away from this boundary. If we can go back to the other slide that was posted, the one before this one. Well, at least to my understanding, according to this layout here that I have, first and foremost, it wasn't on the paperwork as far as a dam or a pond, and then when I heard that it was supposed to be one, that property line, I would say it's another maybe 30 or 40 feet away from a natural ravine that goes behind our property. So, my concern is, if a dam or something is created, will that create an issue on my property where the ravine is? Because there's a deep ravine, and then my actual house in my driveway is probably another 20, 20 feet or so away from the natural ravine. That's about 20 feet deep. So, my concern is, if there's going to be a dam that's made, is it going to impede the flow of natural water when it comes through?
So, my understanding from the description by the applicant, and then from your property as well, was that your property is on the north side?
Yeah.
The north end of this proposed development?
On the east, on the east side, which where it says subject, it's about a total five and a half acres right there where it says subject, so we're right there if that dam is going to be in that far corner over there.
So, from my...and I may have misunderstood, but from what the description that I was understanding is that there's a small creek that branches off of the major creek. So, the major creek is running north and south, essentially along their east property line. And then there is a smaller finger of this creek that branches off to the west that runs east and west, and as I was understanding, that was where the dam was going to be built, on that smaller trib that goes off to the east or to the west. And so, it would be, my opinion, and to get really an official opinion to back you up, you need to get a...hire an engineer for that, but I will tell you what I think, is that if they dam up the small trib that runs off to the west, that that wouldn't have any impact on your property. It would actually be impounding the water on the applicant's property on that, on the large lot that's on the north end.
And I'll say this, and this will be my last statement, and that was a concern, because last week I actually got out and I put my snake boots on, and I walked the property, and it's very wooded, and the concern is, you're right, if there are multiple streams going through. So, the concern is, like, well, we have a ravine here, it's about 20, 30 feet deep, and if there's going to be some sort of blockage, will it create a natural path that'll run over and spill into an existing ravine? So, that's the only reason why it was in question.
And as part of their plan, if they build the dam, then they would have to provide an emergency overflow to protect, so that it wouldn't just have a free path to run other directions. They would have to show a spot that it would go back to that natural flow path.
Okay, appreciate that.
And I'm happy to help, if at all, with the request, if you wanted to get any additional documentation about what's been filed so far, and just happy to help with that process. At this point, this is the final plat, so it would not be coming back to us for any additional review. It's going to be with city staff, so...but happy to help with that process.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I got a comment.
Please. And would you mind giving us your name and address? Sorry, just got to make sure, because we got to start the clock over.
Forgive me. Remember the protocol. But my name is Kathy Alfred, and I'm his wife, and I just...my problem is, I don't see what you have, what you plan on doing up there. So, you can change things up. I don't...I tried to have a polite conversation with you the last visit, but you're very condescending. So, my concern is this, and I want to be a good neighbor to you, and I want you to be a good neighbor to me. I think we've all have bought into this area because of its natural wooded beauty, and I don't want to see an ugly dam. I don't want an ugly dam, and I don't want stagnant water that produces mosquitoes and West Nile disease, and maybe some black mothsins or whatever. And I like the fact that I can see wildlife and trees. So, I'm against this, because apparently, once it leaves this committee, we don't have a say. We just have to get a hired hand, if you were a lawyer, to speak for us, or a civic engineer. So, that's my problem. Why isn't it seen and shown? You knew what you were going to do, because you're the one that told me about the issue when we came here. And you were very, 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 very condescending. I was very polite. The gentlemen that were working with you were platter than you were, and you sold me, and I'm going to have a dam. And you told me I can do whatever I want to with my property. I can do whatever I want to. Well, when your property affects the way that I live on my property, then we're not being good neighbors. So, I am against this, because to me, I don't trust your words, and I can't see what you're going to do. So, that makes me distrustful of this process, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it, Ms. Alfred, and I know we met...we visited on the phone a few times about the...about this review process, and I think the most I can say is to let's look at the details that are in writing. These images are to guide us and help us, but what's most important is what's actually written down. So, again, I'm happy to help with the review of the documents that have been filed with the city already, and the most important thing is to continue to monitor any damage that may happen to your property. But I like to be an optimist, and I trust the city's review process and hopeful in that we can resolve this in a way that's still respectful of the property that you have. So, happy to, again, still work with you all on this as the process moves forward.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a question before we move on. Go ahead. I want to interject just a couple more things about this. Depending on the size of the dam that's constructed to, Oklahoma Water Resources Board could have some jurisdiction over that and would have to sign off on it as well. So, that would be another avenue of protection for the downstream property owners.
That's important.
And I don't know if that application has been made or not. On one other item, we're going...I'll go back and revisit sidewalks. You guys can handle the part on the inside, but it's been the city engineers' opinion and directive on all of these developments along section line roads that we require the developer to build sidewalks along section line roads. And I know we get the argument a lot that, well, there's no sidewalks out here now. There's not a sidewalk here. Why should we put them in? Well, this is the one that sets the precedent for that, and if we allow this development without requiring that, then the next development, well, these guys didn't have to put one in, why should we have to do that? So, it would be my opinion, my...based on what I've discussions with the city engineer, that we require the sidewalks along Wilshire, along that section line road. If the applicant desires not to do that, then they should turn in a request for a fee and low sidewalk that would be reviewed in our office and either approved or denied by the city engineer.
That seems appropriate to me. Commissioner Ford?
Okay, yep. My question was back on the dam, and the question is, since what we have before is a final plat, clearly we can talk about sidewalks or not, but we could not at this stage say yes or no to a dam, right? Just want to make sure it's clear, okay? With that, I appreciate what you said about the Oklahoma Water Resource Board that it's got to go through there, so while we can rule whether or not we want this plat, we appreciate all that information about the dam. I was listening intently to the OWRB, Oklahoma Water Resource Board, I think, so you need to make sure they know about you and your concern with it. Now, back to the sidewalks. Thanks for that. I'll turn that over. Just want to make sure we're clear on the dam. I didn't think we could yes or no the dam specifically.
And it did, and we've had some conversations before about this, which required me to do a little bit more research. That surprised me that that was not among the scope of things that would get considered at a preliminary plat stage and then had to be finalized when it got to us for the final plat. But again, it's just going to have to be something that's monitored, and there are other entities with that responsibility, so. I cannot make a motion. It sounds like, Commissioner Claire, you're going to be up first to tell us about which way we're going on sidewalks, and we will just vote until we get a majority, I think.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify one thing. So, you know, the TE2 was related to internal sidewalks. There was nothing about public sidewalks. So, we're adding a TE4.
I have one more question. The sidewalk on the arterial, wouldn't that be required? Isn't that already required? So, we wouldn't need a TE for that, is that...
Yeah, that's required.
Yeah, it's already required. So, they would need...they'd actually need the TE to say to not have it on Wilshire.
Can I ask a question to the applicant? The preliminary plat had sidewalks, right?
No, sir.
No. So, how does that work on the preliminary plat? Are we not even looking at sidewalks? I'm sorry, I'm...okay. So, this didn't already come up. And then, the way that this is written, it's the sidewalks are required to be constructed when the homeowners have purchased a lot and are permitting a home, right? Or the developers permitting a home. So, they get built as the homes get built. Is that...that's how this works, right? I mean, I guess that's a question to the city. So... So isn't that part of the cost of the home? You're not putting them, you're not paying for all the sidewalks in the development? Are, are, I mean?
Well, that, that is true. It's still, to me, it's, it's not necessarily the cost, it's the aesthetics of it, which is what we're trying to do is keep this as natural, just like our neighbors want. I mean, we want the beauty of the trees, we want the beauty of the land. I mean, we're already putting in this big old city, you know, spec road and then I don't, we're adding another, you know, hardscape. And that's what we're trying to, to me, it's not the feasibility part, it's the aesthetics.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I understand the debate about additional hardscape is not, you know, it reduces pervious surface. Would you not think that though, you know, for the, the sidewalks get built once and they're there forever? So wouldn't that not make the development more desirable for, for families to purchase homes having sidewalks? I would see that as a valuable benefit that.
I mean, I, I think at this point, Commissioner Gouvein, I, I think we're, we're at an impasse on this. It's a matter of whether this commission's willing to, to approve of the variance that, that the applicant has asked for. And I think those are all valid arguments to say no to the variance. So I think it may be best for us just to go ahead and vote on the variance and see where we are if the majority of us is there, you know?
If, if I might, Chairman.
Yes, please.
Jared Martin, Planning Department. Just for a little bit of clarity, so the, the variance that they're requesting wouldn't affect the section line road, which I think you have already determined, but that is correct. The code actually, chapter 59, would actually address that. So whatever that requires is what they'd have to do on that one. The internal sidewalks, the reason they're requesting a variance, so if this were an RA development, zoned RA in an urban medium part of town with an urban medium Luda, or excuse me, rural medium Luda, they wouldn't be required to do the sidewalks. And because this is a, a style of development that's similar to what would be an RA development, but it happens to be in an urban low intensity Luda with a, an existing R1 zoning, but they can't get the services they need to hit that density that would normally be allowed in that zoning and in that Luda. They're building a rural style of development. But because it's in those two areas, the R1 and the urban low, it triggers that sidewalk requirement. And so that's why they're asking for that variance. So had this been a couple of miles away, they wouldn't even be requesting it because it wouldn't be required.
That's important because we often have these discussions about the distinctions between the Ludas. And so knowing that is, is really helpful to know. So thank you.
Sure.
All right.
You're up.
We'll take the variance first. I'll move approval of variance to section 5.8, .2, .B, .1 of the subdivision regulations relating to the, to the construction of sidewalks along internal roadways.
So just for clarity for commissioners, to vote yes would mean that we will allow them to not have internal sidewalks. To vote no will be a requirement that they will have internal sidewalks. Just want to be clear. The motion is to approve of the variance to section 5.8, .2, .B, .1 of the subdivision regulations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner LaForge. Please cast your votes when available. You need six votes for variance to be approved. So that motion has failed. We are now in line for a motion on the item.
I'll move approval of item C 7528, subject to technical evaluations 1 and 3.
The motion is to approve C 7528, subject to TEs 1 and 3. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now in line for item 9.
Item 9 is KC 7525, final plat of Manning Estates, section 1, located north of southwest 119th Street and west of South MacArthur Boulevard, and a variance to section 5.10, .5, .B of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers representing the applicant. We've read the staff report, agree with the TEs. TE number two has to do with the variance request having to do with sewer, which the staff reports, or supports. And so with that, we just request your approval.
Thank you. This is in Ward 3. Commissioner Fraley?
I spoke with staff earlier on the capacity of the lift station and how the capacity of the lift station would require the septic systems in those units and the timeline for the upgrade of the lift station is, is maybe two years. So I am in agreement with the variance. I don't, I don't have any, it's a, it's a straightforward application, so I don't have any questions on it.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments from commissioners?
What's the average size of the lots?
Point seven eight acres.
All right.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on this item C 7525? Commissioner Fraley? And we'll need to vote on the variance first.
On C 7525, I move to approve TE2 variance to section 5.10, .5, .B of the subdivision regulations.
Commissioner Fraley moves approval of the variance to section 5.10, .5, .B of the subdivision regulations. Let's see who seconded it. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion's passed, but I don't think my screen has adjusted quite yet, I think. No, okay, yeah, let's. It's not showing on mine. Please forgive us. I think, I think it stuck. Well, then we'll go for, we'll go forward with a voice vote again on the variance. Commissioner Claire?
Yay.
Commissioner Fraley?
Yay.
Commissioner Privet?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gouvein?
Yay.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
Commissioner LaForge?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. I believe that motion has passed. We're now in line for a motion on the, on the plat.
I move approval of C 7525, final plat of Manning Estates.
The motion is to approve C 7525. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, let's see if we, maybe we can get it working on this. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes when available.
Commissioner Hinkle, what's that?
Still not showing the vote. Okay, then we will go ahead and have a voice vote on the motion to approve of the final plat, C 7525. Commissioner Claire?
Yay.
Commissioner Fraley?
Yay.
Commissioner Privet?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
Commissioner LaForge?
Aye.
I also vote aye.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item 11. Yeah, item 10's been continued. 11 was continued as well. Right, we're in line for item 12.
Mic is out of trouble. Item, item 12, KC 7532, preliminary plat of Harbor Landing, located south of northwest Third Street and west of North Cemetery Road.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzel with Johnson &amp; Associates, One East Sheridan Avenue. This is a plat that should look familiar. Last year, this commission recommended approval and city council ultimately approved the SPOD for this development. It is a duplex development. This application has five TEs, which we agree to all of them. Walking into the chambers today, I did receive a protest letter from Mr. Justin Martin. I don't know if he's here today to speak. I did review the letter. If you recall, during this process, during this process, we did have protests, I think from the neighborhood to the west and maybe to the north as well. We hosted a neighborhood meeting. We made some changes to the document and I, by the time we got to Planning Commission, I don't know that any neighbors had shown up and we didn't have the protest at council. The protest letter specifically speaks to the, his property values, the concerns over duplex and the kind of typical concerns you'd see with a density of this type. This is in conformance with one of the two site plans that was included in the SPOD. If you recall, there was a lot of conversation over the connection north to Third Street and whether or not we take access directly out to Cemetery. Ultimately, I think our office was comfortable with either option that the commission saw fit. There was a lot of conversation about that at the last hearing. In looking at it, just the separation from Third to our proposed drive out on Cemetery, while it met separation distance, we thought the best path forward in terms of access control along Cemetery Road was to not have another street intersect that close to Third. So that was the intent. That's what we've come back with. If it is the commission's desire to reverse that and close the 1 to Third and open it to Cemetery, we're open to that. But ultimately, we left that in the SPOD up to the planning commission's discretion. So with that, we would ask for your approval today.
Thank you. Commissioner Fraley, this is in your ward. Would you like to begin our discussion?
Yeah, we did approve the, concerning the protest. We did approve the two family homes in this area in the SPOD. It looks like you guys made an extra connection towards the south maybe that we didn't have before.
We, that was included in the original draft.
Okay. But I, I don't see many changes from the original SPOD, so I am, I am in agreement with this application. I don't have any questions on it.
And I, I will state that that connection south would be consistent with our, our regulations for us to have that connection. And are there any questions from commissioners before we hear from the audience as well?
Mark, is there going to be any access to Cemetery with that whole development or is it all going to come off of Third?
No, one of the TEs we're agreeing to is limits of no access along Cemetery, so our only access point will be north to Third Street.
Okay, and that's all sections of the SPOD, I guess? We're looking at one here, I assume, right? And there's going to be one south?
Correct. And so just for the record, this is identical to what was included in the spot, except that it's actually one duplex lot less than what was shown after surveying and engineering came through. Couldn't fit that extra one, so it's actually less dense than what you would have seen at Planning Commission.
Right, okay.
Any other questions from commissioners? And before we hear from the audience, I do want to be clear about this to Commissioner Fraley's point. We have already, this area has already been rezoned. It has already been rezoned to allow for the building of duplexes. This commission today does not have the authority to take, to take away those, the right to build duplexes on this property. So we, we, we are not here to debate whether or not duplexes are appropriate, but we are here to debate this plat and whether the layout of this plat and the subdivision regulations are being met. So it's just important to understand, we're not here to re-debate whether duplexes are appropriate. We had that debate in zoning and so now we're at a different phase of the process. That being said, I think the first person that I have signed up to speak is Martin Brecht. And I apologize if I messed that name up.
Thank you, Commissioner, for having me here. Regarding.
We just need your name and address for the record. I apologize. And you have five minutes to address the commission.
Five minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you got it. I'm just here to ask some questions regarding this planned project. Is stage 34 units duplex units? Our questions are, are any of them government-funded units, section eight housing? The second question is, where will the access entries be? Because I can tell you, living in right across the street in Settlers Ridge, North Cemetery Road is getting clogged up already. And with 37 more units, it's going to be even worse. So the other question is, are we going to put a light at Cemetery Road and Third Street? Because it's going to be needed. Rush hour morning, rush hour evening, it gets clogged up, we can't even get out. Next question is, are the units going to be the exterior all brick or will the front only be brick and the back be other materials? Is there going to be a minimum square footage for each unit? Because we're in a gated community and these are homes, they're not duplexes. Will there be an ongoing vibrant HOA to make sure the property values stay high all around? Is there going to be a restriction on the percentage of units that could be rented? Will there be outside fencing that will be brick or other materials like we have at Settlers Ridge? Have HOA covenants been constructed or developed? And finally, how will utilities be brought in? Are there, is there going to be additional 34 units which depletes the water pressure for us and everybody else around as well as electricity? So those are the questions I have on behalf of the HOA of Settlers Ridge.
I will say a few things. I'm certain the applicant has answers to most of those questions, but I will say a few things. This commission does not have the authority to implement an HOA. We do not have that authority. That is not within the scope of our review. Nor do we have the authority, should, my understanding is the applicant is a private property owner who intends to operate privately. However, this commission does not have the authority to prevent this or any other property from being sold to any government entity or any other private entity. So as far as the scope of our review today, that won't be a part of it, whether or not this will be public or private. Now, as far as the intention to rent or to make it or, or not, that's also not going to be within the scope of our review today. But I, I believe you've asked a number of questions that I'm certain the applicant is prepared to answer.
I think I got all of them. So if I miss anything, please let me know. First, I think you said surrounding us are homes, not duplexes. I think these are, these are still homes, just want to make that clear. People will be living in these. There's, the intention is not to be section eight. Cemetery Road is a funded bond project, which I believe is expected to start by the end of the year. Mr. Butler might help me with that, but going off memory from the zoning case, I believe that was stated last time, that Cemetery Road is being widened and fully improved. I don't know that there's a plan for a traffic signal there, but maybe when the city is doing that work.
But we, just to be clear also, we don't have the authority, as far as this commission, to impose that. That's traffic commission and we do have a former traffic commissioner here who I'm sure could, could speak to that process, though.
In terms of material, the SPOD did lay out, it had the standard architectural material. It's 70% brick or masonry materials, so that could be brick, stone, concrete board. There is no minimum square footage per unit. There will be an HOA. The CCNRs have not yet been developed. It is not determined at this, so there's no rental restriction on that. It's not determined at this time whether these will be sold or a portion of them will be rental. The SPOD also did lay out requirements for site proof screening along the north boundary line. I believe it was brick columns spaced every, going off memory, 75, 100 feet. It had to be a stained capped cedar fence, so it was something that would be durable. I think that, that was everything I had written down. If I missed anything, I'm happy to address it.
On Cemetery. I did receive confirmation from our planning director that, that there is widening underway, I believe, on Cemetery.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's not under construction, it will be shortly.
Great.
Any further questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item C 7532? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Fraley?
I motion to approve C 7532.
Commissioner Fraley moves to approve C 7532. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes when available. Please cast your votes when available. And that motion has passed. We're now in line for item thirteen.
Item thirteen is case P U D-1867, application to, for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of P U D-1867, located at 659 First Americans Boulevard.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzel, Johnson and Associates. Address is 1 East Sheridan Avenue. Before you use a specific plan that is somewhat different than the typical specific plan you would see, typically you're reviewing landscaping, building placement, parking counts, everything that confirms that the site is in conformance with the P U D. This one is a little bit unique in that what is being requested today is specific approval over an architectural material. When we took this P U D through, we had a significant amount of renderings and building elevations that showed what we believed to be the product that we were using, which was a drive-it material or a reinforced EFIS. That was language provided from A D C I. They are the architect on the project. They do resort projects across the country, and have found success in using this exact product on all of their other resorts. So with this one, we had crafted language in the P U D that allowed for stucco, and we specifically noted reinforced EFIS material as permitted. If you recall, this was in the scenic river design overlay. This P U D removed that from that overlay district. In doing so, we worked with staff to include certain language that may have been found in the overlay. One of it was a restriction on simulated stucco product. At the time, it was our understanding that the reinforced EFIS would be different than the simulated stucco material. We got to permitting, we have thirteen permits in right now that are all pending, a condition on this approval. And so we've worked with staff over the past probably two months at this point on, on the path forward. And so the Planning Department, Legal Department, the City Manager's Office reviewed this, determined that the best path forward was an amendment to the PUD that allowed for specific plan approval over architectural materials that might need different oversight by the Planning Commission. If you're unfamiliar, the P U D process allows for amendments when intensity, density, and the intent of the P U D is not changed or altered. Ultimately, that's what's led staff to be agreeable to the amendment, to bring this application before you. So the material that's proposed, we've provided a significant amount of background, in addition to warranty material, to show that the material proposed is just as durable as the other materials that are allowed in the P U D. And so with that, we're happy to answer any questions, but we would ask for your approval, because this would allow our thirteen building permits to be issued, so that construction can continue.
Thank you, Mark. This is in my ward, and this was a very, a very complex project, to say the least. And so I appreciate all of the background work that's been done. After having numerous conversations with Commissioner Goveen, who is an expert, being an architect, an expert on the different types of materials, I, I've been convinced that this is within the scope of, of the materials that are allowed, and is of a sufficient quality. I think this is a reminder, this whole issue, though, is a reminder to us as a commission to be very careful about the wording of the approvals that we allow for, for different type of, of exterior finishes. And so just being very careful about what our intention is, and making sure that that's clearly stated when we're, when we're writing T E's and looking at the, at the staff reports, et cetera. So I don't, I'm in support, but I, are there any other questions from commissioners?
I'll, I'll just comment that I'm also in support that this is a, it's a high-quality exterior finish system that is equivalent to stucco, which was already allowed in the original application, so we're not trying to backtrack and re-argue that topic. So good work putting together a thorough package of information.
Happy to help the commission.
Any other questions from commissioners? Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on P U D, the special permit, excuse me, specific plan for P U D-1867? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve-
P U D-1867, S P O two.
The motion is to approve the specific plan, S P O two, for P U D-1867. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Clare. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now in line for item fourteen.
Item fourteen is S P U D-1423, application to rezone 5525 Northwest Sixteenth Street from R one to S P U D-1423.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Kelly Work. My address is 105 North Hudson, Oklahoma City, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, J. Ruiz Construction. This one has been on your agenda a number of times. We've been working with the Windsor Forest Neighborhood, which is there, surrounding this property to the west and to the north. This is really an infill project, this two-and-a-half acre tract, it's located there at the northeast corner of Purdue Avenue and Northwest Sixteenth Street, so just a little bit east of MacArthur. What is, what had gotten a lot of attention when we first brought this application, there's an existing six thousand square foot non-residential commercial-type building that exists on this property that has been there for, for decades. And when the S P U D was initially presented, proposed, the request included an event center use for that existing six thousand square foot building, and that attracted a lot of attention and opposition from the neighborhood. So we, we revised the S P U D. We have removed that event center use entirely from the S P U D. The existing six thousand square foot building that I mentioned will now be devoted to church use, so the only uses that will be allowed will be single-family residential, and as you see from the conceptual plan that's on the screen now, we're proposing to have residential, single-family residential lots there along Purdue. There is the existing single-family residence on the property that fronts onto Northwest Sixteenth Street that you also see, and then that the church building will front also onto Northwest Sixteenth Street. So we're, at this point, we're not aware of any remaining opposition to the S P U D. We believe that the issues have been resolved and addressed with the neighborhood. We'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you all may have, or that any member of the audience may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners? This is certainly a welcome improvement from the event center, so I'm happy to see it. I know I did visit with neighbors previously, with the previous application, and, and was able to visit with Mr. Work about this new proposal. It sounds like a good way to, to handle this, this whole thing, so I'm pleased. With that, is ready for a motion.
Mr. Work, you're in agreement with the T E's?
Yes, sir, yeah. I meant to mention that. Yeah, we're, there are two T E's that are referenced, and we, we are in agreement. We've, we've already made that amendment and have submitted that to staff.
All right. Is there anyone here to speak on the item?
Anyone here wishing to be heard on this item? No one has signed up.
All right.
I will move to recommend approval to City Council, S P U D-1423, subject to the technical evaluations.
The motion is to recommend approval of S P U D-1423, subject to the technical evaluations. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. Mine didn't come up. Oh, here we go. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item sixteen.
This is case P C-10865, application to rezone 621 North Idaho Avenue from R one to R two.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Natasha Patel. Address is 621 North Idaho Avenue. The goal is to rezone from R one to R two, so we can just build a duplex.
Thank you. This is in my ward, and I am in support. I also received a message from the president of the J F K Neighborhood Association, in which this property is located, expressing full support. And I guess there's been a conversation with, with the Neighborhood Association, and they're in support, so I have no questions. It's consistent with the area to have a duplex development here, so I'm in support. Any questions, comments from commissioners? Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on this item, P C-10865? If not, I think we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of P C-10865.
The motion is to recommend approval of P C-10865 to City Council, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available.
Commissioner Corrigan, say it.
Yep, those were your questions, Mr. Work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now in line for item seventeen.
This is case P C, oh.
Go ahead.
P C-10857, application to rezone 11205 North May Avenue from O two to C three.
Hi, I'm Dr. Laura Owlsley, and I am requesting, I am at 11205 North May, and I am requesting that our office complex be changed from an O two to a C three in order to house a small event center in my particular building of those three buildings that are in that area.
Okay. Commissioner Noble?
Thanks. And before we start, let's see if there's anyone else in the audience to speak.
We have no one signed up to speak.
Okay. When I read the, the application and going through it, the first thing that came to my mind was, this would probably be an S P U D, not a straight zoning. And the reason for that is because of the surrounding residential zoning that's already here. And so, and in talking, we had a pre-meeting, we talked about this, and also with staff, the recommendation was to do a continuance for you, so that you could then apply for an S P U D, which would allow us, as a commission, to limit some of the uses that are in the current straight C three zoning for this property.
And so I think it's important to add to, to what you're saying, Commissioner Noble, is that with the current zoning, and I, I understand that this is not your plan, I, at least I believe, based on our conversations with staff, that if, if this property ownership were to change, those property owners would have the ability, and maybe the desire, to, to demolish the existing buildings, and if they had the ability to rebuild under C three regulations, they can take up, they can have one hundred percent lot coverage on that lot. There would be very limited restrictions that would prevent us, that would allow us to protect the neighborhood that's to the west. And so I share Commissioner Noble's concern that if we were to grant, that if we were to approve of this application the way that it currently is, it does not give enough assurances that the neighborhood would have the ability to be protected from some of the negative consequences of some of the uses that are allowed under C three. So I share that opinion with him, but I, of course, we are just two people on the commission, and are there any other questions or comments from commissioners on this?
Oh, I'd just like to echo that, that I'd like to see this as S P U D.
That would be my opinion as well.
So at this point, you, you have, you have a choice. Your choice is to, no matter what our decision is, we are making a recommendation to the City Council. It sounds like there's consensus that if you are unwilling to, to go back and redo the proposal to be an S P U D, that the recommendation of this commission will be to deny this application. But that process will then go to the City Council, and the City Council will have the final say. Otherwise, your option would be to do as Commissioner Noble suggested, and go back and work with staff, bring the application back, and then we'll review it as an S P U D.
Okay. I'll be willing to do that.
Okay. Would a month be enough time? I'm looking at staff. Jeff, Sarah?
We would need at least until March twenty-third in order to be able to convert it to a S P D application and file, and mail notice.
Would that work for you?
That's fine.
Okay. So then I think the motion is just to continue.
So I move.
I can't make the motion, but Commissioner Noble-
I make a motion to continue P C-10857.
Until the March twenty-third?
March twenty-third meeting.
So the motion is to, to continue this item until the March twenty-third meeting. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Clare. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
We'll see you back here shortly. We're now in line for item eighteen.
Item eighteen is case P U D-1927, application to rezone 4300 North Post Road from A A.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzel, Johnson and Associates. Address is 1 East Sheridan Avenue. Before you use what we believe to be a very exciting application, I think it's been in the works now for quite some time, multiple years. This is the Green Pastures Studio. It is a film and education center likely in the future for production if this P U D was to be approved. They came in, met with the city and, I think, multiple officials some time ago, and it was determined at the time that the zoning that they have in place allows for school and education uses. Since right now they're a training facility that works, ultimately their goal is to house production crews and do production much like Prairie Surf and the Cox Convention Center downtown. So the site plan that's in the packet is their ideal full build-out. The background here of what led to this application, the city received ARPA money, and, and a portion of that money was set aside for technical assistance for local companies to accomplish different activities. In some cases, it was storefront improvements, in others, it was the ability to get rezoned to allow for their future operations. So they were awarded that money, and part of it is being used for this rezoning process to have the site ready for building permits when the future comes for the next level of development. So it's a unique P U D in that, as you can imagine, our current zoning code does not have uses specific to the film industry. And so when you think about the film industry, you're going to have trailers out there, you're going to have warehousing, you're going to have storage facilities. Rather than file a P U D that simply said, every land use, use unit is permitted in this P U D, that would likely cause a lot of concern, because if this development went away and the school was to be torn down, we wanted some level of comfort. So we worked with staff quite a bit, and we came up with language to allow the uses that are there today and office to be allowed in the future. We then added a significant number of uses, but we restricted those uses to be ancillary to the main facility of film and studio industry support. So the goal and the idea here is, when a warehouse needs to come in, or trailers are parked on-site, they're allowed to do so when they're in conjunction with this industry. That prevents this from being torn down and becoming an Amazon facility in the future. Anything like that would need to be rezoned. I think we have two T E's, we're in agreement with those, so we're not asking for any variances on this application. So with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions, but we would ask for your recommendation of approval today.
Thank you, Mark. And this is in, in my ward. I am, I think all of us are aware of the growing economic opportunity for Oklahoma City, and frankly, the state, that the film industry has. I am very happy to have something like this in, in Ward seven in general, and, and I think that this is a great project and a great, I'm hopeful about how great this could be. I do have one question, and it's about the fast food use unit. And I understand that it's ancillary to, you know, to the film industry, but I'm just wondering, why, why do you need fast food? Wouldn't they be catering? Like, do we, do you need that use unit?
Sure. That's a great question. So we don't need it for catering, but when we think about the fast food use, what that is, is typically like a Kava, Zoe's Kitchen. It's the fast casual where you order at a counter, there's no drive-through permitted. The thought was that there may be a food use that gets incorporated at full build-out, so we wanted to have the opportunity for that. I think if it ended up just being a cafeteria, that use is not required, but we just wanted the flexibility for that. I'd say if it's a major concern, we're happy to either limit it in square footage or in size.
I, I think my, I guess I'm just, because I'm wondering if you're going to sell, but you wouldn't be selling these things to the public, because it's contingent on, on this being part of the film studio. I guess my just main concern was, does that mean you're going to be able to temporarily open a McDonald's in, you know, in the cafeteria of Green Pastures while, you know, and say we're filming? You see what I mean?
Right. That's a great point, and that is not the intent, but if you think about the Oklahoma Contemporary Art Museum, they have a bit of-
But it sounds like that's unnecessary, right? I'm looking to you all.
We currently have a separate use unit for drive-through fast food, so this would not be that.
The first time I knew we had a use unit for roof gardening.
I'm, I'm open if anybody has any creative ideas about limiting this further, but I think it's okay based on the fact that it is, you know, again, contingent on this being a film studio. Are there any questions, comments from commissioners? Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on this item? Then I think we're ready.
All right. I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on item PUD 1927, subject to the technical evaluations.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval to City Council of PUD 1927. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've now reached the end of our agenda for separate items to be heard. There, I don't believe there are any additional items. Communications and reports, we'll start with Planning Commission committees. I don't believe any of our committees have any reports. Planning Commission members, Commissioner Claire?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Fraley?
There's a training in March, and I'm not sure if you received an invite.
You didn't get an invite?
We did get an invite.
I got one.
Okay. Need to look at it again.
Me too. I said the same thing when we were talking about the pre-meeting. I said, "But I'll, I'll go back and look more carefully." I probably did.
It was from someone, I forget who it was from, but not the usual suspect, I think. Yeah. So it might have slipped somebody's.
That's, yeah, that's probably it.
Noticing it. But I did notice it, and I responded, "Maybe."
Oh.
When it gets closer, I'll, I think I can, can be there, but.
Anything else, Commissioner Fraley? Commissioner Privet?
Nope. I'm good.
Commissioner Hinkle?
For completely unselfish reasons, get out and vote on Tuesday.
Not for this guy.
If only I lived in Ward 5. Commissioner Goveen?
No.
Commissioner Noble?
Nothing.
Commissioner LaFloyd?
No.
And Planning Department?
Yeah, we, so the, yes, I did want to thank you for mentioning the, the training session, and I believe it would have come from Keith. Does that, okay. So it would not have come from a normal person, but if you can't. The normal person, like who you're used to seeing. But, yeah, please let me know if you have any questions about that. It's for the new commissioners, it's the annual training, and we, we go through and talk about various legal issues, how to best conduct business as the, as the Planning Commission, and important, I guess, things to have common mistakes and so forth and so on. So we'll have some examples, and it's, it's usually very helpful. So also wanted to announce that we have a new, we've replaced Paula and Aliv, let me get this right here.
Add it to her right there.
Elena Olivoe Harrison, and she started in subdivision and zoning division just, just recently, so we're happy to have her here, and she'll be taking over what used to be Paula's role, so, or has taken over that role.
Welcome, Elena. And if Paula's listening, she has not replaced you in our hearts, Paula. She is just doing new, your duties, so.
She's somewhere. Are they having lunch this year at the training?
We are having really fabulous food. I think it's more of a breakfast-type thing.
Oh, yeah.
Fabulous.
Sounds great. So are you RSVPing yes now, Commissioner Privet? Was that what this was about?
Well, it's not beer or anything, but.
No, we can't, we can't have that, but, but we'll have, we'll have some.
Excellent. Municipal Counsel's Office. All right. Citizens to be heard. We still have citizens here listening to us. Is it because the meeting was so short? Seeing none, is there?
Oh, absolutely.
Please give us your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to address the commission.
I'm Tom Vaught from 1121 Northwest 11th Street. That, we had a SPUD process, but it was deferred, and I wanted to speak on that, and I'd like to send Goveen's email. A brief meeting with you would be appropriate before there to, so that things would be clarified before we achieve the SPUD process. And our concerns are the SPUD, not with the SPUD process itself, but they want to go from a R3 medium-density residential all the way to basically an R4 multifamily, and that's a dramatic escalation from, you know, a reasonable escalation would be like R3 to R3N. So I wanted to discuss those issues. And also, I have a Bachelor's of Architecture from OU, and I've worked as an intern architect, and so it would be a professional learning experience for me, for both of us.
Sure. Well, I'd be more than happy to meet with you on that.
Thank you.
To discuss that case, I'll give you my information.
Thank you.
And my understanding is that there's some continued meetings that are going to be happening with the applicant as well on that item between now and the 20th, you bring it back on the 23rd?
I believe it's the 9th, Mark Zitza with Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. I think since it's deferred, I don't know that we can discuss the item, but that item is continued for neighborhood meeting. I'm happy to share my contact information so we can get that set.
Yeah.
The neighborhood meeting is appreciated.
Well, Mark, while we're here, can we just agree you'll invite both of us to the same meeting and?
That'd be great. And, and my parents and other concerned neighborhoods.
Your parents are definitely welcome. They are invited to the meeting.
Absolutely. It was continued because neighbors reached out, so we're, we're going to get a second meeting set.
Thank you. I feel better already.
Great. If anyone else wishing, any other citizens wishing to be heard today? All right. Seeing as there's, I don't believe there's any other business, so on a very well, way too early, 2:47 PM, I believe that we are now adjourned.